I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose soul we're free and just as for our own.
Roll.
Graham Cassoun.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
And we have a call.
Four more minutes.
Tonight we have the minutes from the common council meeting of September 18th, 2018.
So moved. President by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Green, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondents?
Okay, we have one this evening, it's a new change of the code for trailers and rear yards.
Vote legislation?
That is all for correspondence.
For the good of the city, anyone would like to address the council, please step forward, you have four minutes to address the council.
Hi.
Hello.
This is about the medallions for the city of Middletown for taxis. I was under the understanding, I talked to the, actually the police sergeant, that as long as we're not picking up in the city, that we're coming from a different destination, through medical transportation, we can return the recipients home. I do a group ride from Port service to the city of Middletown, it's a state saving initiative, it's called, you know, the Port service group ride. I bring, I pick them up in port, we, you know, we gather them all, we bring them into the city of Middletown, outskirts of Middletown, and then we return them. I only charge New York State $10 per head, that's why they call it, you know, that's why they call it a group ride. Now, if I was only allowed to bring them in and drop them, and I can't pick them up, it's going to cost New York State $35 a head to bring them back to port. I did talk to the sergeant, and like, we thought it was fine, she said, as long as we're coming from a distant, I do not pick up in the city, it comes from a different destination, I do no cash. Excuse me, we've been here for 51 years being detoxy, we have never, we don't break the rules, I mean, I had this problem in New, the city of Newburgh too, and I had to go with them, because if I can't take the people home, I basically have to cut my fleet in half and lay off half my drivers. So, I mean, New York City, New York State is trying to get these group rides to save money on all this medical transportation, and that's the initiative of this, and I do the Crystal Run group ride, I do the Port service into the city, but if I bring them in, I can't bring them home, I'm not too sure what to do here. Like, I talked to the sergeant, and I guess she was misinformed too, because she said, as long as I'm picking up from a different destination, if we do get pulled over, to just say, I am completing the round trip of my, of medical transportation from a different destination. But we got two citations, I have to go to, I went to court, and I said I wanted adjournment until a trial, so I have to go back, but I'm not too sure. I would, I have no problem getting a medallion, but they said there's only 10. So, I, I'm kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place, so I don't know what to do. I'm willing to pay for a medallion, but there, they said there is none offered, there, there is no more to get, so I, I seriously, I don't know what to do right now.
So, medical medallions, they fall under New York State coverage, they don't fall under our city ordinance?
Well, the city ordinance, these are city of Middletown citations I'm getting.
Um, we can look into it, I can put it into committee, and we can review it in the committee. Do you have any paperwork?
I have paperwork from the state, just my roster stating where I pick up, where I drop off, where, the day that I got the two citations, like, and I, like I said-
Are that copies?
I, I do, these are copies. I can leave them, you can see-
Yeah, if you want us to state what you're requesting, and then send it to us, to common council, and we'll put it in committee.
Okay, so I just mail it, like?
Yeah, you mail it right to the city clerk's office.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody, my name is Alfredo, I'm the organizer for Nobody's Mid Hudson in Middletown, and I'm here again, I think we talked about this two weeks ago, about the municipal ID's, and everybody's excited about it, the community is really happy, they're showing it, and they calling us to see when it's going to be improved, and, and what we need to get it, so it's a really excited moment that we live in, people are getting more like, feeling part of the community, you see now they're bringing the kids, now they act in, and, and they, they just feel comfortable now. They, they don't feel like they're not allowed to be here, now they feel like, yeah, I'll be there, they're not afraid to be here anymore. So, that's, that's something that is really getting people interested, and we're just waiting for that, I can't wait, I tell you the truth, I'm, I'm so excited, I'm, I'm happy, and just hoping that for the next meeting, we, we have an order, and we have a resolution, so they can have identification soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council?
Hi, Ignacio Ceballos, lead organizer for Nobody's Mid Hudson, I want to say thank you to all of you. Two weeks ago, we had a good surprise, the next day, I got phone calls from a lot of the people who saw the news and everything, they're like, are we dreaming, or is it a dream, tell me the truth, did this happen? Because every day we see the news, we don't hear many good news, especially something that we did, right, something that, I live here and I made it happen. So, it was, you guys made that happen, for a lot of the people here today. And, in two weeks, we just want to make sure that you guys are prepared, we want to bring 100 more people than this. So, we're asking, how are we, we might have people line up in the stairs, is there a communication system that we can use, to communicate with everyone down the stairs and out the doors? Because we're getting calls every day, it's like-
You want to have moved them?
Can I come? How should I come? We're also thinking about maybe possible just having translation, just for the vote, because they, they will be very excited to hear how the city is walking the meeting here, so. I, once, once again, I want to say thank you to all of you, with, with all this great work, I think a lot of the people here, in, in a month, are going to be walking with a little more pride, and with a little more courage, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, reports of, oh, go ahead.
Hi, everyone, my name is Ray David Virgin, I'm from Teddy Woods Place, I've been living in Middletown for about, well, I moved recently about two years ago, but I've, I've been living this area, and I, I just want to say thank you so much, because finally, you guys look like we take it serious, this, this topic, this issue for us, and I want to say thank you to my community, because they see right now, this is in pro, in progress, this is, this is going to happen, and, and don't feel like nervous, because that, that is important for us, and I believe for you too, and I believe we, we have a good community, and like Angelo said last time, we can, we can help each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Jerome, I am active member of the organization of Nobody's Mid Hudson, I'm here again to support this campaign for the municipal ID's, we all know that it's like really important, you see all these people right here tonight, just to remember you, Mr. Massey, it's the last meeting that you were afraid of what could happen to us, because we are going to put our information on the line, but just to look around, and you see all these people coming, they are not afraid, they are willing to take those risks, they already put a lot on the line, since we, we came and we crossed the border, as I say, we, we got immigration behind our backs, and I think now that we have this opportunity, we cannot waste it, so, yeah, hopefully, like, everything goes, goes well, we're going to keep fighting, doesn't matter what happens, because it's something that we need, it's a necessity, it's not something that we just want, it, we really need it, because we need, you know, to pick up our kids sometimes, and that's really important, like, kids, for the US, kids are the future of the, of the country, so, I'm pretty sure that you guys will take the right decision, and, and will, I want to thank you for, for, you know, talk about it, and hopefully, we, we get a good, good stuff, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, reports of the department heads, DPW commissioner. Got a cold?
Yes, my apologies, good, good evening, council president, council members, I'm going to be short tonight, I'm very brief, Elm Street, the water line, we heard that before, right?
Elm Street looks good.
Elm Street, the water line has been, the permanent water line connections have been established, the sidewalks have been done, sewer line has been abandoned, new water main is in, so now, Thursday, it's the schedule for paving the Elm Street, and hopefully, by the end of this week, everything will be done on Elm Street, weather permitting, and then we'll be focusing on the remainder of the project, for the black dirt sewer going from Lake Avenue towards Charlie, towards the presidential schools. Just a reminder also, as we see all these severe weather events happening around us, more frequent than not, just a reminder for people to please disconnect, I, I frequently talk about this in council meetings, but it's important, to disconnect your sun pumps, or downspouts, or, or roof drains, or any of that, surface water, or groundwater from connection into sanitary sewer, because whatever you pump into that sanitary sewer, it's going to go down the line, during a storm event, it's going to come above ground, and cause somebody else to get flooded. That's against, against the law, against DEC, DEC will come back with heavy fines against the city at some point, if we do not keep attacking and handling this situation, which we are. So, please, help us out, it is not legal to connect any storm sewer, or groundwater source into a sanitary sewer, so please do disconnect it, help us out, we appreciate that very much. Talking about wet weather and severe weather events, because of the rain last week, and we had the saturation, and the, and the water, and the ground, you may have noticed that the water level in our reservoir by Mount Hope Road has been elevated, and it's almost overflowing the road, so we had to work fast, Thursday, last Thursday, and install pumps that worked over, over the weekend, we had the county DPW, they were very helpful, they brought one of their pumps as well, and we had one of ours, and we worked around the clock until yesterday, basically pumped the water down, and now, there might be, because of, there might be some kind of blockage, in the pipe interconnecting between the two sections of the reservoirs, that Mount Hope crosses into, or through, so we're going to have an emergency, on an emergency basis, we're going to have a diver coming in on Thursday, to dive in that area, look at the, look at the culvert, to see if it blocked or not blocked, and to try to remove any blockage that is there, we'll be there with heavy equipment, whatever is needed, to try to help out the situation, to unblock it if it is plugged. We know it is not plugged completely, but we, we're not sure about the severity of the situation, so that's going to be, we're going to be investigating that. We also have a project, that's going to be before the board of estimate, next board of estimate, which is to install much larger culvert across Mount Hope Road, and Mount Hope Road, by the way, it is considered as a dam, under DEC regulation, it does have a dam number and everything, so it is classified as a dam. So, we have a proposal before the, it's going to be coming next meeting, before the board of estimate, to include constructing a new culvert under, under Mount Hope Road, it's going to be much more, it's going to be much more substantial than the existing culvert, which is only a 24-inch pipe, and it's done, you know, back in late, late 18, 1900, and it's only 24-inch cast iron pipe, so we're going to have a much more substantial culvert going across Mount Hope Road, which is, again, identified as a dam, in the eyes of the DEC. And on Friday, we're going to have inspection of all our dams, using, from the DEC, through their dam safety division. So, with that, I will conclude, if you have any questions for me.
Alderman Johnson.
Just two quick things, you, you promised Elm Street by the end of October, and we're going to meet the deadline, so, thank you for that, I kind of drive through there every night on my way home when it's passable, and the sidewalks, everything looked really good, and I did manage to trudge through some of the backyards on West Main on Thursday, when it was raining, and everything looked relatively stable there, so thank you again for that, it looks like we're making progress in both of those projects.
Yeah, absolutely, we're very happy about the performance of that drainage system at the time, during the last storm, yes.
Good deal, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Jacob Alderman-Kleiner?
Just, just quickly, in the last heavy rain, I noticed on a lot of streets, the water not going into the catch basins, because of the buildup, the leaves and debris around it, and if you remind people maybe to keep those clean, it would, it would help us a lot.
Thank you, thank you very much for this, that's extremely important public message. All of our crews, street department, water department, sewer department, when not, when we are not handling emergency, we go just before storm, to clean up the catch basins. Alderman, excuse me, Alderman-Kleiner, he brought a very good point, which is to go out, please clean up the catch basin grate in front of your house, from any leaves, any obstructions, this way you'll alleviate any potential flooding for your neighborhood, for potentially your house, so help us out, please, by clearing any obstructions, any leaves from the grates, from, on top of the catch basins. Thank you, Alderman. And then we have New York Rising too, I can talk about it, but you have all the options before you, and we can talk about it at your, some other time, thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Police chief?
Good evening, just a couple quick things to discuss, first, as I continue to speak with the residents of the community, I continue to hear that they don't want to bother the police department by calling us, but I please, I encourage you, encourage the constituents, the residents, to reach out to us when the problems arising, to give us the opportunity to respond at that time, to hopefully alleviate the situation, if nothing more, we'll have a police car in the area, to hopefully deter whatever that negative activity may be. October 27th will be a trunk or treat, the police department will be participating in with the Parks and Rec Department at the YMCA location, and then effective October 27th, the Halloween curfew will go into effect through November 1st. Lastly, I have just a recognition to make this evening, this week, the police department was provided with a portrait of a police chief that served the city of Middletown Police Department from 1902 to 1906. Going back into the records, it appears that this police chief was the second official police chief that we have on record for the Middletown Police Department, it would be Police Chief Joseph Deray Brinkerhoff. This portrait has been hanging in Alita Brinkerhoff's living room for many, many years, as it was a great relative of hers, it appears to be more of a painting than it is a portrait, it was donated to the police department, they felt like it was an appropriate location for her to come back to as she was moving out of her residence, I was very glad to accept it, and I'll be honored to hang it within the police department. As I said, he is, from our records, what we could indicate is the second police chief on record for the city of Middletown, so I would like to thank the Brinkerhoff family for donating that to us, Alan, Carl, and Christine brought it to us just the other day, and Alita, thank you for providing us the opportunity to have this great portrait, and I'd like to just wish you a happy 99th birthday. Other than that-
Alderman Massey? Chief, you mentioned the curfew, would you give the times of the curfew, please?
Just read it to you here.
I thought you went to school with the guy.
So, by resolution that you voted on last meeting, curfew would go into effect on October 27th through November 1st, and it'd be from 9:00 PM through 6:00 AM during that time, and it would be anyone under the age of 18, that was out without a parent, or a specific purpose, would be in violation of this curfew. So, again, October 27th through November 1st, anyone under the age of 18 years old.
Anyone else have a question? Alderman Johnson?
Chief, I think the people behind you are curious to see the portrait, can you just hold it for the-
Yes, I apologize. So, he was the, from what we could see, the second, sorry, from 1902 to 1906.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Superintendent Recreation?
Before I start my report, I'd like to thank the police chief for that recognition, obviously, there's great pride in the Brinkerhoff family, my father was a firefighter here, my great-great-great uncle was a police chief here, and my, my grandmother, my uncle, my dad decided that, that belonged in the city police department, and I'm glad our family was able to do that, and since the chief told my grandmother happy birthday, I really have to tell her happy birthday, because she doesn't miss a meeting, so, Grandma, happy 99th birthday. I also like to thank Lowe's, they have their hero project, I, I let you know they were given a facelift to Maple Hill Pool House, it's absolutely gorgeous, from, from hooks to hang clothes on, to the paint job, to the doors, to the special floors, I kind of can't wait for summer to come to show it off, so, thank you to Lowe's and that project, it's greatly appreciated. The Davis Park expansion, we've been busy meeting with the mayor, John Bianchi, myself and the architect, we're getting the proper plans, permits, contracts in place, so hopefully everything will be right on schedule in the spring, to move dirt and get thing, get everything going. Once the plan is totally concrete, we'll make sure we show you what that facility's going to look like, but there's still a few things we're working on and in communication with. You'll also see a resolution in front of you tonight, that opportunity to move a little bit of money within our operating budget would allow us not only to do new playground equipment in two parks, which you guys already approved with serial bond, but it would allow us to do three parks. So, between this fall and next spring, we would have new playground equipment in Sproch Street, also Jerome Neal Park, and Bennett Hill Park, and we'll also be adding a small shelter to Sproch Street, which will bring in revenue, and be a great location for small children's birthday parties, having pool and new playground equipment, and a bathroom all in one, in one small area. And we have a whole lot of special events coming up, check out our website, I'm not going to mention them all, I know the next one is Parents Night Out, the kids can come to the gym, October 26th, for $10, and the parents can have an evening out, and like the chief said, October 27th will be a big Halloween block party with the Elks, the YMCA, and the city, it's a great collaboration, I know the trunk or treats, like, from 2:00 to 4:00, which is when, probably the majority of the folks will be around, and haunted houses and all that, so, that's a great event for the city and, and collaboration, which is a beautiful thing to see, and that's all I have this evening.
Any questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris. City clerk?
Just a couple things, as the chief said, with the curfew for Halloween, it is, it is on the website, and it will be in the times sold record on next Monday and Tuesday, with the full times and everything, and I also sent it to the schools too, so they, so they know it too. Just a reminder too about the trunk or treat, that Highland Avenue, part of that will be closed for that trunk or treat, and you approved that, I think, the week before, from the Armory all the way up to the YMCA, and that's going to be, I think, from 11:30 down to around 5:00, if I remember. Also, tonight, you have a resolution for my department for a transfer of $4,000, and this is for purchasing more of the EZ passes, I ran out of money on the budget, because we've been selling so many of them, because of Harriman, of course, going to full, I think they're buying them two at a time now, so, I ran out of money to, to purchase them, so we, that transfer will be a wash, because it's going to be income coming in, and for the, for those EZ Pass responders, and that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for John?
Did I miss it, the upgrading the city code, did you mention that? The 416, is that you? Streets and sidewalks, the last resolution? I'm sorry? Does resolution update the city code, chapter 416, the last, is that you?
That's I.
Yes, that's for- What's that about? -street openings, that's for a, the corporation council asked for that, it's an increase of insurance for the city- Oh, okay. -in case somebody wants to cut open the streets. Okay, thank you. If, I'm sure Jacob could mention more about it if he- Oh, that's fine, I was, I was curious what I meant, I didn't understand.
Anyone else, question for John? Thank you, remarks of Alderman, Alderman Burr?
Parks and Rec, we just want to thank Chris and his staff, the park equipment is very outdated, and we appreciate your, your support on transferring those funds over, thank you.
Alderman Johnson-Festoir?
Yes, good evening, Commissioner, I want to thank you for the roundabout, I still hear the negative feedback, but for the most part, I think, I think it's beautiful, I think your department did a wonderful job with the, with the roundabout, I'm pleased with it. Thank you.
Alderman-Kleiner?
Okay, thank you, I, I think the Highland Avenue, I think our resolution was closing at like 12:30 to 4:00, and I think trunk or treat is 2:00 to 4:00, so, it gives the people at the seventh day event, that were parked, been there a lot and stuff, time to get out, and everybody's aware of it, so I hope it will go smoothly. Last time, I neglected to mention in my remarks that our communications committee had bodus, voted unanimously to move forward with the city municipal ID resolution, and to move it to the council, and then, our council voted to move ahead, and put the resolution on the agenda as quickly as we could. We, I met with Alex Smith and, and John Numchuck, and also with Jonathan Bix from No One Leaves Mid Hudson, and we went over a lot of, almost everything on it, and we hope we have it in pretty much final shape, we're having it reviewed, I believe by ACLU attorneys, but whoever Jonathan can get it to for review, and we'll do a final review, and then we'll have it to the council, and, and plenty of time for all the Aldermen to read it very carefully, and give us their opinion, so, on November 5th, we will have it on the agenda, and I hope we will pass it unanimously, but that's everyone's individual decision, so, we are definitely, there definitely will be a vote on November 5th, now, there will be, as Poughkeepsie did, there will be an implementation date, because we're going to pass the legislation, then we have to translate the documents, we have to have instruction on how to recognize them, we have to have the application on the website, and it has to match the legislation, we'll hopefully have the application and everything be translated, so, and, as Alfredo Argonazio mentioned, you know, when, when we do the resolution, having someone here to translate it for people, and you can, we can discuss that with President Rodriguez, but I, I think that would be a good idea personally, so, thank you all for coming tonight, and hope to see you November 5th.
Alderman Rec. So?
Good evening, I just, the Neighborhood Watch Committee or Group met last Tuesday, we had an interesting conversation with our officers, one of the main concerns that came up was really just speeding, that seems to be the constant thing around town, but just to kind of assure residents that you'll see the speed trailer making its way around the city, it's definitely been, from what I'm hearing, very helpful to the police in terms of collecting data, in terms of how fast people are going, where our problem areas are, and how they can address it, time of day, things like that, so, that is being addressed, so if you were at that meeting, or if you have emailed about issues, it is making its way around the city, so be, be prepared to see it, it will light up if you go past it too fast. The third ward meeting will be next week, Tuesday evening, here on the second floor, at 7:00 PM, so I hope to see many people from the third ward there, I hope everyone has a safe and happy Halloween, and our kids stay safe, as for our, our community tonight, I'm very happy for all of you, and I look forward to seeing this move forward, and I hope that we can do something that you mentioned, like, being able to broadcast this to you somehow, and obviously, this, these meetings are live on Channel 20, so, there's, there's got to be something we can do, but hopefully we can, it, it's, I'm happy to see you this excited, and feeling this positive about this movement, so, my congrats to you, have a good night.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you, I'll just, I'll echo the same remarks, some of the, some of the things that were said tonight, at the microphone, makes me think that you're worried that we're not moving forward with this, so nothing could be further from the truth, it just takes time to, to work out all the details, so, I'm sure that we're going to, what we're going to hold to our promise to push this forward for the November 5th meeting, thank you.
Alderman Green?
Thank you, with regards to speeding, just please remember, Lake Avenue has a lane closure this week, I know there was a Nixal alert sent out, but, you know, take it, take it easy, it's as smooth as it can be during construction, but, you know, there's still bumpy parts, and there are, you know, plates covering holes in the road and that, so, you know, just for the sake of your car and everyone's safety- So, you know, just for the sake of your car and everyone's safety, please take it easy as you go through there. And I just want to, you know, bring a little attention to all the amazing ribbon cuttings we've had lately downtown. And, you know, I just think it really echoes, you know, what, what everyone here is seeing in that Middletown is growing and it's becoming a really, really excellent place to especially dine, but go out on the evenings, have fun. I mean, it's hard enough to find parking as it is, but we keep opening such awesome places that, you know, I think it, it really shows, you know, everyone's faith in, in our growth process. So thank you.
Alderman Tobin?
Nothing big. Just in my neighborhood and around the area, I've noticed a lot of kids running around with their helmets on. I mean, I did it when I was a kid, but now I'm a little older, wiser, I wear a helmet on my mountain bike. So just encourage your children to put on a helmet. One bad spill, you can really get hurt. And try to ride with traffic, you know, not in the road. Thank you.
Alderman Massey?
Nothing this evening.
New business?
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, to authorize the treasurer to transfer $5,370 within the DPW 2018 budget for payroll expenses.
Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Discussion. Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $47,000 within the Recreation and Parks Department 2018 budget to install, install playground equipment and swings into Bennett Hill Park.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Discussion. Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, to declare two supervacs in the 1996 Pierce Tower ladder truck surplus from the Middletown Fire Department.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Casoun. Discussion. Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, to transfer $4,000 within the Common Council 2018 budget for the purchase of EZ Pass responders.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green. Discussion. Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, to transfer $4,000 within the Common Council 2018 budget for the purchase of EZ Pass responders.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green. Discussion. Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $14,532 within the DPW 2018 budget to cover the cost for one Cornell vertical dry pit water pump for the water treatment plant and any additional equipment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Discussion.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John-François?
Aye.
Burr?[1659.71]